Productions, everybody knows who everybody is. And actually, at the outset, let me say, I'm gonna try to keep this meeting to no more than an hour, because I know we've got a lot of busy people in the room. Sorry, I know, you're gonna be angry. Because I know we've got a lot of busy people. So, I'm Brian Boyle, and the current Chair of the Select Board in Bolton.
Stan Wasaki, Bolton Select Board.
Marie Salivero, Bolton Town Administrator.
J.D. Tool, I am now from Bolton, I'm the Chair of Stowe.
That's Steve Carrigan, I'm the Chair from Lancaster.
Jeff Gaddy, Andrew Administrator, Lancaster.
And Kate Bayou, Bolton.
And thank you to everybody who showed up. So I think really the purpose of tonight's meeting was just to get the three towns together, because we're sort of sharing a common situation, which is, it seems, each of the three towns are pretty cash-strapped. You know that the school district has been doing a lot of work since January, trying to get its budget in order. But at least as of the February 12th update, I think the overall operating expenses increase was gonna be like a 5.15%, roughly.
Five to four, but because of the overall, it's the same assessment, it's actually just kind of less than.
Yeah.
The torn down, yeah.
Got it, thank you. So, I thought maybe we could just talk through what each town is facing, because I know our town administrators connect with as boards, I don't know that we've had the opportunity to share the situation. So, I'll just briefly say Bolton, and Marie can jump in with any details, but depending on the day and how we do the math, we've got a roughly $1.8 million hole between revenue and expenses, so. And that's with the assumption of the schools' numbers currently being where they are. So I don't know what the situation in Stowe is.
We're doing okay this year. That being said, the growth of the budget, the schools now carry over 70% of our budget. This plan numbers, it's not gonna be sustainable for very long. Even though we're seeing reason to believe right now, we're actually looking at having to cut some positions in town.
Is that 70% including Manin? Or is that everything, or is that just Mishova?
I believe that includes Manin, I could be incorrect, but I think that does include them.
But by the bulk of it is.
I'm sorry?
The bulk of it is by Mishova.
The bulk of it is Mishova. And that's on the operating side. We haven't figured in the cost of the taxpayers for the new school.
How about Lancaster?
Oh, we're rolling in dough.
Yeah.
So, if the budget's almost, we'll go up to the cycle one on state primary budget. Twenty-one of $31 million goes to education, all including Japan and any other, Buffalo County, etc. So we have about 66%. Current budget with reduced workforce proposed, if we use the schools' current numbers, we've got about a $400,000 gap. So it's really gonna be, I think, a policy decision whether the powers-to-be, the Select Board, and Tommy wants to use free cash to balance that, they wanna have a reduction in, you know, in the school budget of some amount. I'm suggesting, you know, 6%.
I would say, we have spent the last three years really trying to tackle all of our budget constraints. Had we not been really complaining about it, we'd probably be in a much worse situation. We are, and due to some positions that we currently are vacant, we probably wouldn't build, which is what Jeff was referring to. We can't sustain, I don't believe, the increases proposed, although we respect the school committee, the sort of efforts to get it as low as possible, but I don't, I don't believe our voters will support it. We, we have been, we did cut that, we paid one payment toward the school debt last year, we set aside money to do the same. So, we've been trying to keep up on those things, and we've done as good a job as we can, but we were whole placeholding a pretty decent increase for schools, and this just ended up being more than we've been placeholding, so it would, I think it would hit us at a number that our town meeting probably would not support, but.
And remind me, you did a recent override in Lancaster?
A year and a half ago. Oh, 1.2 now.
Okay.
And since we've had propositions two and a half, I think that was the second or third, we've won, we've passed four plus years. So, it was a very difficult one to get through. And it was planned, the idea of it was to look five years in the future, like, do some smart planning. So it did get us, what its purpose was, was not just short-term or longer, and it's got us on a good path, but unexpected expenses, I'm being aware, can throw the whole thing off.
Yeah, I mean, I think you would know better than I when the last time Bolton successfully did an override, but we had, I don't think there's any way for us to get through, and so the question's just gonna be, what is the magnitude of the override?
I believe the last time we attempted one was 2005, and it failed. So we haven't had one in 20 years. The last one we tried failed.
For DOR.
Since we have a couple of members of the finance team at the school district, I didn't know if you could just give a quick preview without giving specifics of what you're expecting in two days' time. It's your third budget update on Wednesday?
Yeah, it's, well, tomorrow we have the joint Finance Advisory. So, and that's essentially gonna be a summary of what you guys have seen through workshop, Budget Update One, Budget Update Two, and identifying where we made the reductions in the budget. And the punchline is, even, you know, your budget over budget, an increase in $3.5 million, 3.3 million of that is health insurance increase due to the 20% increase, and non-salaried special education costs. So the remainder of the budget increases that we've proposed is somewhere $150,000 to $200,000 for the rest of the system outside of those costs.
So, based on the February 12th update, there's not gonna be a big difference in the numbers?
No, it's bringing that all back together and showing specifically what steps have been made in a summary format.
Okay.
Sort of like what we've done the past couple of years.
Yep. So, anyone can jump in, but I'll just say, I think I wanna have a successful town meeting, and I'm sure everybody wants to have a successful town meeting. And I think, speaking just for Bolton, if an override is gonna be part of what's presented at town meeting, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, someone's flying in my face.
And we're going to have to be able to present to the taxpayers and the voters what sacrifices have been made on the town side and the school district side to get to that override number. And I don't know with your $400,000 shortfall, I'm guessing you're gonna similar go.
Yeah, we would be, we would have to have a four-day plan for them, so.
Do you have $400,000 free cash to throw?
Um, yeah, yeah, that's not the issue.
Put your whole face in your tail. Next year it's 800. Everybody knows the system.
Oh, yeah, but we do have.
This is what we have.
I mean, we used over 900 grand in free cash. If you use 50 or 100 grand at the end of the day, if you use lots of money, everybody knows you're out of the gate, and you're 900 grand, and like that. You think health insurance is gonna slow down? Absolutely not. Next year it's gonna be another 20, you know, and all the other costs that everybody faces, there's nothing to change. Everybody has to collect a bargain, everybody has, you know, want to own, the revenue just isn't, keep another override, and then we're gonna be 20%.
GIC? You guys GIC?
No.
I am.
Yeah, so, yeah. But, not unique, so. I mean, my concern is, is that, you know, we're faced with what we're facing now, but we haven't even seen the total impact of the new high school debt. I mean, that's, that's still coming. I don't know how the residents of Bolton are gonna take this. I mean, we're anticipating like $1,600 increase in taxes this year. You know, and we're still, you still, you guys still haven't borrowed the full amount for the high school debt.
No, we're on bond number two.
Yeah.
So, tomorrow morning, TAs will get a memo from the outlining, sort of, everything closed last week while I was on vacation, so we'll get an outline from the other, everything's finalized at bond number two, but breaking down the rest of the debt as well, and also just an update, even though it was in the budget workshop, an update on high school enrollment, how that breaks down for the assessment for debt.
Yeah, I mean, I talked with Marie a few weeks ago, you know, that roughly $1,600 number, $1,200 of it is you guys, between the debt in school and the budget, 400 is us. So, this is, this is a difficult, this is a difficult thing to sell. I don't know how the people are gonna react, I mean, we have, our recent history is that people don't want an override.
Is that two-thirds of your debt?
So that makes up, it was, the initial was 30, and the 75.
Okay.
So that's 105 of the approximate 161 we need tomorrow.
And that's a year.
60% or something like that. I'm sorry, say that.
Somewhere around 60%.
Yeah, yeah.
After bond two.
Yeah, the bond advisory group, and Jeff, I may have covered this with you, that we set out with as the project was coming on board, was the stage of borrowing, not trying to do everything upfront, so.
Yeah, no, we were all on board for that.
Were you getting good news in the, you should share in terms of how the bond came through?
Yeah, I shared this with the school committee, so the, I mean, when you work out all the premium and the different bonds within it, I mean, the average interest, the true interest cost is down by 4%.
You mean, is 400?
Yeah, down near 4%. Which is, which we feel like is good, you know, given the current conditions, so that's good.
When we did the forecast ranges prior to the election there, we ranged 4% to 4.5%. So, we hit the bottom end of the range that we forecasted out.
You might know, you might not know this off the top of your head, but this year, I think your certified E&amp;D was like 2.5 million, and you're gonna put 1.4. Yeah, it's just under 2.5, 2.474, I believe, Brian, off my head, but. Do you know how that compares to last year? As far as? The certified number? Our certified number went up incrementally, maybe 30,000 or 40,000, and I think we leveled the appropriation from E&amp;D to, as a revenue source, offset the budget, the same 1.4.
So, if the communities go forth and have discussions about not providing you what you've asked, when does those scenarios get built? So, say that Lancaster says, you know, we're not gonna give you X, we're gonna give you Y, and the town meeting, you know, how would the town meeting be informed of what the implication of that is?
Well, in that scenario, there is no, there's no mechanism of, we give, we ask for X, we give Y. Because once the school committee votes the budget, that's what has to be voted, even if there was a motion to move that, if you vote a different number, it voids out the school committee, that forces you into level budget, one-fold budget scenarios.
Only if another town wins. Only if it's a town that's.
Yeah. So, but the position that we're finding ourselves in, that, you know, as we talk to the school committee about it, is if we end up in 112 budget scenario, that will be another reduction of about 40 positions in the district, so.
But, so I understand the legal implications of what a school committee has to do, but, you know, if you know well in advance that on the table of each community is.
I will just, I don't wanna answer for you, but they're never gonna tell us what they would cut next week, because then.
They came.
Because then they told us what they would cut, and then we can, and then the taxpayers are voting based on that.
Okay.
So, I mean.
I get that, but.
Basically, what, because we gave this out every time we have a budget crisis, if two of us vote down, you all have to go to 112 budget until we can get a better number, and call special town meetings, and do it all over again. So, and your budget's up, June 30?
Yeah.
So, in theory, you could possibly get another special town meeting in before the end of your budget, but.
The scenario it would put into play for us would be, at that point when it's voted down, we have to notify employees by a certain time. So you cut them loose, and then hope that they're available to hire back once the budget's there.
When do you have your town meeting?
The first Monday, Thursday?
Are you the same date?
Saturday morning.
Yeah, usually there was discussion, I think it's staying.
We're usually always waiting to see what happens on yours.
Because they were talking about reading.
See, that's why I'm pretty skeptical, Lancaster.
I know, yes.
So, just a question for you guys from Lancaster, you mentioned that when you did the override a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, you tried to almost like look ahead five years so that you wouldn't be in this situation again right away, but it seems like you're in a big yet.
Well, we were in a much worse situation then. This is, is this survivable for us? Sure, to this point, if resources are there, it's just, it'll then put us on the path we were on before.
Yep.
That the override was set to avoid, was anticipating future expenses, we were covering some early school construction debt, so we made some smart decisions anticipating that. And we did put in a pretty decent placeholder number for school, not anticipating the increased costs in health care also. I think had we come in at our number, which I can't remember, would have been 5% increase or 6%. I can't remember, 6. Then I think it would be an easier school filled as well. This just sort of doesn't put us right back on the same path we're on, but without continuing to some line in the future, it gets us closer together. Because we've lowered our tax, we've been able to do a lot in the last couple of years, mostly because evaluations have gone up, so money did come in, but the tax rate has gone down, because we've been trying to meet the promise to the voters, and we said, if we do this, we're gonna be on a good financial footing, and we will do our best not to increase your tax rate, but instead lowered it. Those are promises that are hard to keep when you're in a bad budget.
Yeah. And then you were saying in Stowe this year is definitely survivable, what does the trend look like for you guys?
We're survivable this year.
Yep.
It's, I think it's like everybody else, the towns, and quite frankly, the school district is trying to survive. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to find ways to think outside the box. To come up with, you know, somehow figuring out a revenue source that, you know, we can work off, that will help to uplift and support the towns. I'm very seriously looking at considering a dry town not-for-profit, specifically with a mission statement, supporting the school district, and raising funds and building after grant monies independently, which can be done in a 501(c), much easier than township, municipalities, and a district. You know, that may be a viable option. I understand that there are separate PTOs, I get that, and they all have their fiefdoms, I get that. But, I really do feel if we don't start to think outside the box, and start to look at some other ways to start to bring income source into the towns, we will, all of us sitting here at this table, find ourselves to the point that we end up so far underwater that we're in receivership, and the state steps in and takes everything over. And I, looking back at the district's history, when that happened, that was not pleasant for anybody, for the towns nor the district. And I really would not wanna see that happen again. So that's why I'm trying to think, are there other ways to do things? I mean, you know, I know there's a school committee member that has sat and said, well, the towns need to figure out a way to raise more money.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck. I mean, realistically, the only way Stowe can raise more money is if we bring in more business. We're built out. We don't have that, you know, option, unless we rezone chunks of land. So that's, you know, I look at that, and it's just not a viable option. I don't know how it is for you all, but.
No, we're, we're in the same boat, we don't have enough land anyway that's zoned commercial. And the voters have steadfastly opposed any type of.
As they have in Stowe.
You know, we've had some potential opportunities in the past, and they've said no, but there isn't enough space to bring in enough commercial to offset. All you do is you, you slow the downward slide a little bit, that's right, but there is, there is no, and yes, I mean, it sounds very simple to find ways to raise revenue, there aren't.
Right. So, and I'm assuming Lancaster is.
We finally started developing some land that's been sitting there for years, decades and decades. So, it's, we're trying, we had a couple of years where our planning board, previous planning board only approved one project a year, now we're making a lot more, so there's some more revenue coming in, but we're a few years from any real tax authority on those projects, so. And the hope is that down road.
There's a little commercial we have, I mean, it's still vacant. We have, we have 5A, 5A Main is still not vacant, the old Koham, I think is finally being sold to somebody, but it's very difficult to get commercial business in here, because there are no amenities, there's no places to eat, there's no dry cleaners, there's no grocery store, there's no this, there's no that, so, yeah, businesses don't wanna move.
Our biggest increases, people wanna put more housing, which of course, send more students to the school, which has its own concerns. May I ask a question about, that 3.3 million that was insurance and special education costs? How much was the special ed cost?
One second. I think it's been 3.3 million charter school tuition.
Yeah, charter school.
Well, sure, the guys, Ross is looking that up, Steve, is, there's, we're facing some real structural issues. So I've been having conversations with our state senators and state representatives about these problems. I'm happy to say that they've all responded back to a meeting that I've asked called specifically just for Mishova. So, I'm gonna have the attention of all five of them in terms of the structural issues. It's planned out for next week, Alito is planning that out with their assistants to basically paint this picture, so that the letter we sent to the community that I shared with the government folks, I shared that with select boards, finance advisories, and TAs. I also shared with our legislators, they replied back very quickly. I had a sit-down with Representative Kilcoin at the Rooster County meeting, I have Kate Hogan this Friday at the Millsix County meeting. Because we're lobbying some positions pretty hard right now to help us with structural issues for the future. So, circuit breaker funding, which is always paying the rears of your special education Having forecasted 75% as their definition of fully funded circuit breaker, we only got 44% this year on our transportation reimbursement.
Really?
Yep. And so, and it was forecasted to us at 75. So you can see where some of these issues are, right? Regional transportation continued promises to fund it at 90%, and then it's coming in at 70%. So we're, we have, there's some bills out there that we're lobbying for right now. Imagine fully funded regional transportation, 100%, to put the circuit breaker rates at And then also, the governor came out with 75 per pupil on the Chapter 17 increases over last year, and we're lobbying for 150 per pupil. To give you a sense, last year the governor put up, the state statute mandated $30 per student, ultimately through lobbying efforts, it landed at 104 per student.
What was the final budget cost?
That increase in cost there?
Yeah.
That would have been approximately, about what, 2?
Because it's basically the same exact.
250, 250K, right? So, those are just elements that we're trying to address.
Just for this district.
Yeah. And so, those are some of the angles, and then also getting at the actual formula and the structure of Chapter 17. And when I was talking to, we were talking about that today, that the last time they introduced the restructuring to Chapter 17 funding, which is 2003, 2004, Jeff? It took four years for them to get to that place. So there's just fundamental structures, and that the school district cannot control. Out-of-district special education costs over the last three years have been, those rates are set by the OSD.
Yeah.
And they've gone up over 20% total over the last three years, yet our funding has gone up seven. So those gaps continue to grow.
So what's that number?
Which, which one?
He was just talking about the, what, the rate versus the other district, and then we get reversed seven or something, what's, what's?
So, there's a threshold on what's called a high cost.
Yeah, I understand. What I'm trying to do is have me break down the 3.7 million dollars, correct, to have buckets that.
Yeah, so the buckets, the big buckets of that 3.5 million are 1.5 million in special education, not salaries. So that does include our out-of-district placements, that does include the transportation piece that's, that's really hitting us.
Is that 1.5, that been an increase from last year?
Increase. And that also includes some of our contracted services, so if we have some visual needs, we have to contact, because we can't, we don't have enough of a caseload to hire, and also, those are limited positions, we have to contract with an agency to provide that, and it's costly. So, those things are built in, the insurance and benefits is going up 1.4, and then our increase on school choice out, and charter school out, on those went up 372K. And while the 372 isn't significant out of the 3.5, it's one of those places where we don't have control over saying, you know, hey, to this student, you can't go to charter school, or you can't do school choice, that's, those are things built out of our, our control. And part of the other difficulty within our out-of-district placements is the placements then can almost set their own rate on additional services.
Yep.
And they can say, we'll accept the student, but we need to increase this service, or add this adult support, and we're either stuck of not being able to provide an education for that student, or taking off the increased cost to provide a legally responsible education.
And we don't have any regulatory devices on levers in terms of the cost of transportation. So we have our contracts, and we had, in our budget last year, we went through a budgeting process, and went with a transportation company that was bringing some competition to the district. It did not work out. They were not able to deliver on very basic minimal elements of the contract that had to be canceled, so we have to go to then second bidder on that per the procurement laws that finds us in these positions. So when we look at the forecast of what we're thinking about for next year, I think the transportation cost isn't gonna be as volatile as we've experienced in this past year. The tuitions are the tuitions, and we got those, those rates set, but we can have, we just got word of a couple of students that are gonna be coming to us, they won't, we're getting close to that time where it won't count on your budget next year, April 1st, I think, is the date on that. But it illustrates the point that, that moving can impact us significantly in that regard. So we're trying to navigate those pieces, and what I talked to, I talked to Senator Kennedy about was no regulation transportation services, and the add-on costs for students that need these services, the school district just can't provide. We have a multitude of programs in our schools for our special. We have a multitude of programs in our schools for our special education students. We have three programs in Lancaster. We have two programs in Bolton. We have now four, five programs in Stowe.
Including preschool?
Not including preschool.
Three at the school age overall.
Three at the school age overall. And then at the high school, of course, we have our, our specialty programs and our transitions program. So we're, we're capturing a lot of that. And that was some of the good work of Joan D'Anilus when she was here and building those programs across the district. So really, we're talking about students that they can't get their needs met inside the school system because they have, you know, their place in their learning and have deficits that are, you know, nonverbal vision, these types of things that have to be addressed in specialized settings. And so what happens is they'll require certain services in order to accept them in the schools, but those aren't regulated in terms of the tuition increases. So they come on top of that.
Could you remind us a little bit of, I think there were about 1.4 in personnel reductions from 1/29 to February 12th? Could you just remind us at a high level what those reductions involved?
Sure. Ross, you rolled them and detailed them all, Brian, but I don't want to say anything off the top of my head. I want to make sure we have that. All right. So the way the budget process works is every year in the workshop, the workshop is the catchall. If we had everything we need, what is it? And then that's, and then we work backwards from that place. And so the new positions that were requested that are currently not employed in the district was a float nurse, a dip, a secretarial help, then sections of kindergarten and grade five and academic tutors. And so we pull those off the budget first. Those numbers, when we look at the, particularly the grade level teachers, like class sizes are based on projections. And so what we've done is gone to then the little actual number that we have now because the projections that we build our models after year over year is the October 1 date to October 1 date. So by this time in the year, the movements have generally settled. We'll have some students come and then there'll be some over the summer, but it's not a large number. Where we do see the most variability in that is in Lancaster. Where we see the most stability is in Stowe. It hardly changes. So after pulling those positions back, we hit the administration. Or try.
Sorry, we apologize.
So we looked at the administration bucket first. We have 24 administrators in the district. And so we took, we're reducing our curriculum director. And the administration team is taking a 0% increase for next year. So there's no increases for any of the administrators. That came almost to $100,000 and not taking those increases. We're reducing our extracurricular activity stipends, 52,000. An evaluation team chair, that is a required position for students that in the IEP team process provide special education services. Those are the facilitators of that process. But we're going to utilize our high school department head and the other team chairs to balance and, and work on those caseloads. Two occupational therapy assistants replaced by an occupational therapist, which the net of that is a reduction of one. Two custodians. And then in the middle schools, three related arts teachers. As we lift, look to shift our eighth grade Spanish model into the related arts rotation. At the high school, reducing 3.4 teachers. In the district, a guidance counselor. Then MRE, we're able to bring back a third grade teacher based upon those actual class size numbers I described. And then reducing our math coaches at the middle school level. So those 1.0 positions would be 0.6 positions. And then unit scene employees will remove the three library assistants at our middle schools. So our middle schools will not have library assistants. They'll have to be managed through the faculty, through the, the phone office. And the part-time secretary. So that's where we got to, that's that bucket of sort of about 18 unidentified positions that we had to work on. Then we got the insurance news. When we got the insurance news, we knew we had to go another 500K. So that's in taking various other offsets and revolving accounts to their limits and removing the four deans from the schools, which, which has created a great deal of worry and consternation in buildings for student safety reasons. And so those are the totality of the cuts that have been proposed to the committee.
So that last piece is the thing, because I missed your last meeting, but so once you go to your health insurance, then in order to basically offset, that's when you eliminated the, or done with the dean positions?
Yeah. Yeah, so we did a prioritization work with our building principals, our admin teams. You know, that was a place that we were then forced into out of the insurance discussion because, and it was a position that they're, they need desperately. These are really, really important people that are front-facing to students, that drive our social emotional and advisory work happening at the middle schools, at the high school. They are the people who, for those kids that have struggles getting into school, staying in the school, that's the point person. So they keep kids in school. And they do a lot of that work that allows the principal then to be the instructional leader, getting in, doing evaluations, observing in classrooms, making sure the educational program is moving.
So the dean, the proposed cut of the deans came after those, as the chair pointed out, after the, you got your health number.
Yeah.
But yet there's still almost like $4 million in health increases.
Correct.
And I don't know why you mentioned it, like if that didn't solve the health problem, it just reduced the health increase problem?
No. So the, that number would have been, the 3.5 would have been bigger.
I understand.
It would have been four.
Okay. So in gen, it wasn't, yes, you got your health number, but the number was already way over.
Yeah. So we're working to get to that target.
There's already $2 million over before we get the health increase cut.
Because we were working really hard to get to that target that we identified at the January 29th meeting.
Correct.
What was the placeholder number for health insurance?
As far as an increase on premium, 12%, that's the high, high mark of the range we've been getting for the last three or four years. Since I started, Steve, I think, I don't think it's been over 12%. So I booked it at 12%. And then the range came out from nine to 19 and we got 19. So...
19.
I said, that's correct.
I had a colleague do that. He doesn't read his board yet. 25% increase.
Yeah.
It's insane, these costs that are landing.
By all means, we should get rid of medication.
You know, we're exploring some ideas. You know, Brian, you were asking about, you know, what are some things we can think about to mitigate challenges in the future? And so we're exploring some models right now. Many municipalities and school districts have insurance opt-out programs for employees where you offer people, it's like a doc out. And so we're studying those programs now. That's not going to help us this year because we have to do it during the signup period. It happens in May, June and get it set up for next year. But these are, these are the types of things we're examining right now to look at how we address this in the future. Because Jeff, I think you're right, this insurance blow up is not going away next year. I think we're going to see it again.
I'm going to throw an idea not to deal with tonight and it may actually be a terrible idea. So, but it just strikes me that, so we have a district with employees that get benefit plan that includes health insurance. Then we have three member towns that also have health insurance plans. And I think at one point in time, maybe Neshoba was never, but at one point in time, certainly all three member towns were part of the same joint purchase. And I'm not suggesting that we have a joint purchase at all, but more that like, have we ever looked to see whether there's relative parity in the plan design across the three member towns plus the district? Because one of the things that strikes me as a hard sell for town employees is if we say, hey, to bring costs down, we're going to change your deductible. But then they're like, wait, but why do the teachers have a more benefit rich plan than we do? So I just think it may be something that, not maybe for this year, but we just look at because it is really hard, I think, for town employees to feel like...
I would guess it would be hard because the likes of bargaining. So it'd be hard to say, here's our baseline.
That's the issue. So it has to be collectively bargained through and those provisions are in the contract. Now, what I will say is based off of the information that came in, we met with our union leaders just prior to the break and we're pulling our insurance advisory committee together to start talking about what are long-term ways to address the insurance issues that we're having.
Do you have a high deductible plan?
We did last year. So we introduced the, so as we're looking at insurance rates and we would beg for last year's insurance rates. We worked up at that time going to a 500, 250 deductible structure.
I'm talking like a $5,000 high deductible that gets an HSA and you feed some of that back to the employee. I mean, I did that in my last job and the other employees like jumped on it. It was a triple track, triple, triple tax free. If you're young and healthy, it's at least an option for people. If you have serious issues, you'd never do it. But just something to explore because it provides more of opportunity. You know, right now everybody gets in the bucket if you're 25 and healthy or 62 and have issues versus if you come, you know, look at some of those. I mean, that's a long term and you have to bargain and I get that. So, but just some ideas to throw along.
Well, listen, we don't have to stay here all night, I guess. I, I think what's difficult from the perspective of the select boards in each town is that we, we respect the fact that the school committee has its separate legal authority. But then town meeting, we're sort of in the position of having to sell the whole town budget, which includes 70% under education. And so what I like, and I'll just speak for Bolton, I really appreciate that our Bolton School Committee reps have sort of, they take the mindset of the town into account because they realize like the budget that we approved in March has to be sold to the voters of Bolton. But I think the more that you guys can continue to do that, because it's, I think it's clear that like, maybe Stowe's dodging a bullet this year, but the trend is just going to get harder and harder for all three member towns.
Next four years.
And, and it's not to say that like it's all on the school district, but even just like when you educated us tonight about the elements of your budget that are actually like, you have to do what the state sets. When they set their out of district tuition reimbursement at X rate, like you have no discretion. Just getting an appreciation for that is really helpful. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Brian. I think there's some, you know, I do worry, in particular, as we, as we look at enrollment in our district and the way the structure of the regional agreement is set up. It's set up where it's one piece of pie, but the share of the pie shifts based on number of students attending the school. J T, you and I talked about this. There is a lot of turnover in Stowe, people who kept their homes. And just the census data for school age children in Stowe has gone down dramatically over the last 10 years. And that has come home to roost in the, the five-year aggregate rolling assessments. And what ends up happening is as, as the Stowe numbers have gone down, that puts the relative increases on the other two towns in terms of how that five-year rolling average shares happened. And Lancaster has the compounding effect. I was able, I saw the maximum contribution numbers as I went into the sheets for, for this year. And the town of Stowe is at the limit of 82.5%. Meaning, you know, if, if the cost to educate is $100, the town of Stowe has to pay essentially $82.5 to educate that child. The state will only give 12.5. For Bolton, it's just above 80%. For Lancaster, it's at 69.1, 69.1. Well, what that means also with the equalization value with Lancaster going up, that's increasing for them. So that increases their minimum local contribution. Because when you look at the budget and you look at the enrollment numbers, Lancaster and Bolton are nearly even now. But Bolton pays actually in terms of minimum local contribution about $2 million more because their equalization value is at 89, 69.1.
So we need to merge the three.
So that's the wealth factor.
Body.
But I mean, that's the...
So one final question on that insurance. So they came back, they gave you a range of nine to 19. And then they came back with 19 and then that was a lighter lump, but there was no...
Yeah. And actually in that meeting, when you and I talked, I think I said, expect 19.
You did.
Because of the information that I had gotten from other districts.
Yeah, we met like that morning of the day we got the rates.
Yeah, and I told her, I said, expect 19.
Yeah.
How often, where I used to work, we'd be in the market every year to chop them around and, and bring it to the union and say...
This is why we're bringing our advisor group together.
What if we could have them together?
On four.
That's a crazy idea. And maybe, and you can throw me out of the room, it's fine, but...
Brian, too.
We can't.
Have, has the district talked with the other districts within the state to possibly consider doing a self-insurance setup? The only reason why I bring it up is it is something that I've explored in the past. And if it is set up and structured correctly, it actually can be quite a savings.
Unless someone gets sick.
Some, you know...
Well, but as I said, if it's structured in and it's built in and it's stepped process from what I saw, it wasn't like, okay, now we're completely sub matured. Oh, great. No, they actually stepped it in and, and worked into it. And it seemed from the information that I had gotten, in the end, it actually was a cost savings for... Well, to answer your question, school districts haven't talked in those sense, but they've worked through their various collectives and insurances that they have, like Maya, as we burn that speed in Maya. So they, and that's a mix with school districts and municipals. And so that's, we hit some bargaining power through that way. Because there's been some districts that have been solo insurers that just absolutely, AB went through their override last year because they faced a, they did a $2 million override, something of that nature in AB last year for, and it was primarily based in insurance rates.
Well, for the good of the order, should we wrap unless anyone else has anything they want to say?
No, this is great, thank you.
Thank you for being here. I know you have the meeting tomorrow night, which we'll tune into. But yeah, I appreciate the partnership. Oh, and for anybody watching at home, not that anybody's watching at home. I will, I will put in a plug for, if you go to the school district's website, it's right on your homepage if you just scroll down. There's like the FY26 budget section, which has all of your output points, which I just think for people that don't, that haven't been following the meetings, like this is a good place to kind of see where the numbers are. So I would, thank you for pointing that up.
Yeah, yeah. And we will, we're updating the sheets now. So we'll have the fresh budget book. We're going to have that for T A's tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have that for our T A meeting tomorrow. And then that'll be, that'll be posted in the school committee materials for Wednesday night. And we'll get it out to, to the finance chairs too, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for the school advice.
Yeah, nice job.
Thank you.